Good evening. Thank you for attending. This is the June meeting for the I-35 Board of Education. I'll do a quick call to order. Nathan Gibson, here.
Melissa Keller, here.
Dan Hutton, here.
Jessica Buckland, here.
Monica Strange, here.
Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a review of the I-35 mission statement and district priorities. The Interstate 35 Community School District exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive citizens in an ever-changing society. Our district priorities are to articulate and support a cohesive student center pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century, and operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness. The 2024-25 board goals are to continue to strengthen the culture of learning at Interstate 35 Community School District that lends to engaged learning and rigorous growth. By the end of the 24-25 school year, the school will ensure transparency and will achieve optimal resource management by aligning staffing levels with student enrollment, maintaining a balanced budget, and ensuring full compliance with Iowa taxation laws. With that, we'll discuss or approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Next, we have open forum. Residents, students, parents, and guardians and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers' participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask speakers to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees, students, or their performance. In this evening, we have one person sign up.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, Mike McClellan just graduated. Yay. So tonight, I just wanted to address something that is talked about and honestly just flaunted quite often, and it's transparency. So not that long ago, members of this very board criticized the previous board for lack of openness, especially regarding legal matters that impacted our district. You sit here and said that the public deserves honesty, that parents, students, staff, and taxpayers shouldn't be left in the dark about issues that affect the community. What's worse now, oh, hold on. What's worse now is that the very leaders who promised transparency have turned around and are doing the same. And that doesn't just sound like hypocrisy, that's exactly what it is. This isn't about trying to shame or embarrass anyone. It's about standards you set when you ask for the public's vote, when you promise change and when you promise better. Transparency is something you do to convenient. It's a commitment that you outwardly promise to give even when it's uncomfortable. You owe this community just that. As a past board representative, I understand that not everything can be or should be shared publicly. There are some things that you are legally not allowed to discuss and opinions that you must be, that must be withheld due to your position. I get that. There are knowingly situations involving I-35, which I will not speak on publicly out of respect for our parties involved, that should, I should have made this very clear to you, that should have made, that should have made you understand that the very people you were criticizing were simply upholding a code of ethics required by their positions. This time, it's time to be transparent by admitting you were wrong. I sincerely hope that the new board members have reached out to past board members who they constantly criticized and shared with them all of the empathy and understanding they preach and ultimately, an apology. Thank you.
Alright. Next, we have Roadrunner Celebrate Success.
Yeah, to finish out the school year, I asked three administrators, Mr. Beckel, Ms. Woods, and Mr. Weber, to nominate three individuals that they felt showed Roadrunner pride throughout the course of the year, and they are going to celebrate those individuals tonight. So, looks like Ms. Woods is gonna step up first.
In true Beckel fashion, he prepared tokens, so get those ready. So, I'm gonna start with Remington. Remington, you wanna stand up, buddy? Just give him a little wave. Yep, there he is, that's him. So, Remington Harzcamp is the definition of dependable. He has achieved perfect attendance not only this year, but last year as well, and probably, I don't know about years prior, but I couldn't go back because of Power School, Infinite Campus. So, two years perfection, showing up each and every day, ready to engage and give his best. Throughout this school year, he has grown with quiet confidence, learning to recognize both his strengths and areas for growth. Remington consistently positions himself for success and leads by example, serving as a steady and admirable role model for his peers and younger students alike. Remington. Boop-boop.
Congratulations, Remington.
And then, I'll go to Reese Young. I think she's here, too. She gonna stand up? Yeah, there she is. Alright. So, Reese has been a remarkable asset to our elementary school, serving as, with dedication as both a cadet and practicum student and as a dependable presence in our daycare over the past two summers and school year. She connects effortlessly with students, skillfully carrying out instructional tasks while ensuring each child feels safe, supported, and valued. With grace and maturity, Reese navigates challenges, challenging situations, and significantly enriches the daily experience of our students that she serves. So, Reese.
Congratulations, Grace.
And lastly, and I don't think Hayden's in here, I'm pretty sure she's at softball, but Hayden Ramey has been a bright and encouraging presence in our first grade classrooms as a cadet and practicum student this school year. Her calm, positive energy and natural ability to connect with students shines through, especially in the one-on-one support she provides, often heard in the hallways lifting students up with both kindness and academic guidance. One teacher even remarked to me, "I want to be like Hayden when I grow up," a testament to the exceptional quality of care and learning she brings to every student interaction. So, to Hayden as well.
Alright, I think all three of mine are out doing high school kid stuff. First one I've got is Serene Maxwell, incoming freshman. And Serene has just got this welcoming student ambassador vibe. She greets every kid, makes sure everybody feels connected and involved. Yeah, just a great kid all around, just a kid I wanted to recognize tonight. Also, Ross Baughman, our student body representative, for all the reports he does and representing I-35 in such a great way and talking about the great things that the kids got going on. I feel like Ross has done a great job for us. And then Talia Nagar is my third student. Talia spent some time and effort this year raising some money for St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital, and she raised over $1,500 with her can and bottle drive. So, just for that humanitarian effort, I wanted to recognize her as well today. And the coins, we're gonna connect with the kids, the coins that we got for them, they just say official good person. And one of the things that one of my favorite coaches always said to me was, "Beckel, it ain't that hard, just be a good person." So, that's kinda what I wanna talk to the kids. I keep being a good person, keep being a good presence and demonstrating and living by the Roadrunner way. So, those are my kiddos, Serene, Ross, and Talia.
And Mr. Weber is at a softball or baseball game right now, which sounds enjoyable. But his students that he nominated are Olivia Phillips, which I think is here. You may stand, Olivia. We made the younger kids stand, so please stand. Brendan Goring and Cory Kirkpatrick. All three students are multi-sport athletes. While they represent team captains of different programs, state qualifiers, and even some school records, we couldn't be more proud of how all three led by example and wish them good luck in their next phase of their lives. Great work, Olivia, Brendan, and Cory. So, thank you.
Congrats, Olivia. That was awesome. Thank you for that. And thank you all for coming, congratulations. Alright. Next, we have Administrator, Director of Reports. Each of the board members should have had that in your board packet. We'll start with Ms. Woods' reports. Are any questions or feedback on Ms. Woods' report? Sorry, I'm trying to pull it up.
What specifically were the things within your presentation that you were wanting to share with other schools?
So, I put a couple of slides on there so you can kind of see, but Dr. Townsley specifically tasked us with speaking to supporting elementary educators, creating quality proficiency scales. So, that's what we covered. And that's basically that, you know, what does proficient look like? How do you know what a four looks like, et cetera? So, that's kinda what we went through there at U and I.
I just wanna commend you on the work that you talked about on the goals. You can tell there's an incredible amount of thought coming up with the literacy goal as well as the information. This was from this report, correct?
Yep.
I wanted to make sure I wasn't going back too far.
Yep, no, you're right. And I put my first year here on there, you know, underneath, so you can see, if you remember, we started at 50%. So...
Yes. And that shows huge. You've seen the growth each year with the schools, 5%, 11%, 17%. So, first off, that's just, you know, awesome progress. And then, I think it's even more awesome that you continue to raise that bar a little bit more. And I agree, you're getting to the point to where, you know, it's really hard to get that extra couple percent, but seeing your guys' thought and plans on how you plan to get there and then setting that goal is just phenomenal. So, thank you to you and your team for all the work on that.
Awesome. Who are the two teachers that get to go to the HouseCon thing you're talking about?
I think Jenna McDonald and Brittany Vidalas are the two that are going.
Okay. And that's in June?
I think July. I've kinda lost track of when it is precisely, but I think July at some point.
Awesome.
It might be during the Warren County Fair for some reason, I think, in my head.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to Mr. Beckel's report. Any questions or discussion on that? I see we primarily thank you for the handbook change information in this. I know we've got that later on in the agenda, but I appreciate you highlighting exactly, you know, what those changes are. And then, the Roadrunner recognition, same kids that you just talked about, correct? And then, summer school. Looks like we're making good progress on that as well. So...
So, is that four of the seven are done already, or you're getting close to the end? Cause you said you had three more to go?
We got three kids that are still taking assessments, so they still have three months to recover. Some kids have multiple classes to cover. Of the seven kids, they're like, they're seven of us.
Oh, that's awesome. Who's helping them? Who volunteered for that, for this?
I've been counseling from some.
Okay, great.
Alright. And then, we had Deputy Hollerood's quarterly reports. Are any questions or discussion? I don't see he's here, but we can follow up with Chad maybe if you have questions or anything on that. And then, next, we have, this was good information, by the way. This is new, the open enrollment data. Thank you for the team pulling that together and bringing that back. I enjoyed reading that and really talked about, you know, the reasons why people open and roll in and why they may open and roll out. And it's, it's good to see that data. So, thank you for pulling that together. Any questions on that? And then next, we had our ClassLink impact report. Again, thank you. I know the board had asked for that, and it was really phenomenal to see the, you know, detailed information on each of the, basically, software subscriptions that we have. And I thought the cool part was this tool is basically paid for half of itself. We're able to reduce our overall technology spend by $31,000. Actually, I don't even know how much ClassLink cost, but it might have paid for itself. I don't know, but it's...
It wasn't that much.
Wasn't that much. So, it's basically paid for itself, would you say, Ms. Wells? Yep. Thank you for pulling that together and bringing it to. Thank you. Is there any questions on that one? Alright. Next, we have Facilities Updates for Superintendent Report. I see we got Garrett here.
And while Garrett's coming up here, I just wanna point out that the administrative team attended a two-day conference last week of learning. I asked them to spend another, I don't know, four hours after the conference on the first day to do an administrative retreat, and just wanna, just wanna recognize them and the work that they put in over those two days. It was a great two days of learning. Hopefully, they felt the same as well. I think everybody was a little exhausted by the end of two days, but great two days of learning to help us continue to move the district forward and continue focusing on those goals and do what's best for kids. So, with that said, I'll let Garrett kinda take over and share what's going on with facilities.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. So, yeah, just an update real quick. We're wrapped up up there, as you guys can tell, by playing, playing some ball games. So fun to see people out there enjoying those fields. Punch list items, we're getting those kinda checked off the list. I was gonna check off a few more tonight, but we got about a handful of those left, none that are impacting use of the space, more cosmetic things that I'd challenge you guys to go see if you can find them. Dan, you might, but if you know what you're looking for, you can find them, but they're not affecting the use of the space. But we are pushing contracts to get that wrapped up so they can build retainage. We've sent some retainers' bills in for this month or for May. Hopefully, the June one captures the rest of it, but we'll see. If they haven't gotten their punch list done, we're not gonna release retainage on them. So, with that, we've got closed-out documentation that we've gotten, as-built warranties, operation and maintenance manuals. Those have been shared with Chad, Brayton, and Rick. So, if you guys have any questions on any of that, let me know. But other than that, no update. Do appreciate, or appreciate you guys' attention to all this, the project. I know construction is kind of an add-on to everybody's daily routine, especially the AD and superintendents. So, we've enjoyed working on this project with you guys. Might be here next month. We'll see if we can get everything closed out. If not, I won't waste your time with the construction updates. So, but appreciate you guys allowing us to be part of this project.
With, I don't have a question for you. Thank you, Garrett.
Alright, thanks.
With Facilities, just wanna update you on the air conditioning project in the secondary wing. So, chatted with them last week, and they're two to three weeks ahead of schedule. So, they're hoping by early to mid-July, everything will be wrapped up. So, which is awesome. So, they got everything, if you remember, they started actually with some of the work over Christmas break, and then did some more work over spring break. And so, because of that, they're well ahead of schedule and moving right along. So, things are going well with that. And I did see Brendan walk in. So, Brendan, if you wanna stand up quick, I'm gonna read the same thing that Mr. Weber shared before. So, "All three are multi-sport athletes. Multi-sport athletes, while they also represent team captains of different programs, state qualifiers, and even some school records. We couldn't be more proud of how all three led by example and wish them good luck in the next phase of their lives. Great work." So, thank you, Brendan, for showing Roadrunner pride and being a model citizen for our school.
So, it was $6,300, and it so far, it's recovered close to $30,000 for us. I'd say that was an excellent spend of money. So...
Yes. And we're able to evaluate all the other systems as they, as they, as we get to them to see how they're being utilized, how much they're being utilized, to show the worth in it, too.
Awesome. Thank you. Alright. Next, we have our consent items. I'm just gonna go through, you guys have the past meeting minutes, and all of these are in the board packets, the monthly bills and financial statements, resignations and contracts, the open enrollment. And then, we have approval of an OPM May Pay App for $905, and approval of May Pay App for the projects and fields, which is $154,301. And then finally, approval of a DCI invoice for $576.50. Is there discussion on the consent items? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
I will make a motion to approve the consent items.
It's been properly motioned to approve the consent items. So, I have a second?
I'll second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Alright. Next, we have, apologize, flip to my paper here. Next, we have our regular action agenda. The first thing up is EMC insurance renewal for the '25-'26 school year. Looks like our insurance is going up a total of $68,000 for this year. Looks primarily around workman's comp and priority, or, I'm sorry, property. Is there anything, any questions or anything you wanna add? Otherwise, I will say, I don't know if you wanna talk about our journey trying to find other alternatives that can, you know, didn't pan out, but...
And Jim Lane is here, and he is still working on looking at different alternatives that have different options in them, so that'll still be coming for future years. It's just nothing that's in play for now. So, if you've got any specific questions, the work comp, we went from the lowest rating to a 1.09. So, that's why that one jumped up. So, that rating system, and that was from two years ago. Those work comp claims kinda follow you and hit you later. So, that was almost half of the increase. But if you've got anything specific, Jim is here.
Why is there no longer inland marine?
The inland marine? Why, we had it last year, and this year, we don't? That's why Jim's here.
Come up, and then I can speak to the microphone.
Yep.
Good evening. And you all wanna talk about insurance after the nice discussion of the kids and the students and stuff? But anyway, inland marine insurance. Inland marine was the builder's risk for the softball-baseball complex. It is complete, virtually complete, except for a couple of things that Garrett's working on. And we moved that property coverage over to the property policy. So, we get rid of that part and move that coverage over to the other side. And you see, the property did go up a lot, but some of that is because we moved $5,000, $6 million of coverage from one side to another. The worker comp, as April indicated, claims from two years ago, there was a couple of lost time claims there, and those affect you pretty drastically. But you went from .66 as an experienced mod, which is the lowest you could get for your size and so on, up to 1.09, which is way below the 1.82 that you were in the mid-2012, '13, '14, '15. We had some problems for a couple of years and got it straightened around. Dr. Feeney was here at the time, and he was able to get a couple of things done, physical plant-wise. And staff really dug in on a couple other things, which is our online reporting, things like that. So many times, I would talk to Ted about, he would call and ask, "Should we report this work comp claim?" The question is always yes. And with an online reporting, we can report it. There is a nurse who talks to the staff person during that reporting time. Do we need to start a claim? Do you need to wait till tomorrow? We'll report it now. Wait till tomorrow and see how you feel. Still bad? Call back. We'll send you to a doctor and so on. It's such a smoother process than it used to be, and that is really helping us good. It's got our, I always say "our," I apologize. It's got your work comp expense down dramatically from years past.
Quick question on the public officials, the workers' comp. That's, that jumped up a little bit. Is that from claims or...?
The public officials is your directors and officers' coverage. You're more familiar with that terminology. But yes, it is from claims. It is the decision-making for you as a board. It is also employment practice coverage for hiring and firing, and those type of claims have picked up dramatically in the last many years. We, we get claims for unemployment. Actions now.
And when it says picked up dramatically, it's kind of a through all. Yep.
Yeah, it's not, it's not you in particular. It is the school system in Iowa. It is employment in Iowa. Schools are not only affected, every private client I have with that coverage is seeing it raised dramatically. More? Thank you. April, I did...
Thanks, Jim. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the EMC renewal.
I will make a motion to what? Approve the EMC renewal for $350,233.59.
It's been properly motioned to approve the EMC renewal as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll make a, I'll second the motion.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Next, we have the storm protection fund. The storm protection fund is to buy down the 1% deductible for wind and hail damage to $10,000 per incident. The deductible buy-down was, in last year, was $34,498 to $100,000 per incident. April, you wanna add anything?
Yep. Now that it's been a year since that 1% deductible has been in effect, and they were able to kinda start a pool and to get something like that set up so that it was cheaper for schools in Iowa. And the only way to be part of this storm protection fund is doing it through EMC also. But this is in addition to the other information.
Is there any discussion on the storm protection fund? Alright. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the storm protection fund.
I'll make a motion to approve the storm protection fund resolution and deductible buy-down for $27,074.
It's been properly motioned to approve the storm protection fund buy-down as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed?
I was an aye, by the way. I just, yeah, forgot to say it. Alright.
Next, we have approval of the handbooks. We had three handbooks on here. We have the Activities Handbook, the Parent Handbook, and the Preschool Handbook. And then, well, you guys all should have had that as part of your board packets to see the various changes that are in that. Is it Secondary Handbook not linked in there?
No, it's under Supporting.
Oh, you have them down here. Okay, under the Supporting Links. And then, the Student Services Handbook, Secondary Handbook, and the Elementary Handbook. So, is there any discussion on the handbooks?
I know the last couple of years, we've been discussing grading policies, and as a recent new student again, I, at school, in my master's program, we are using a traditional grading system. And I know that my son went to DMAC this year. He's using a traditional grading system at DMAC with letter grades. At Simpson, my daughter used traditional letter grading. And this is actually my second school that I've gone to as an adult that uses a traditional grading system, since our school has been using standard-based grading. So, I am questioning whether we wanna stick with standard-based grading. I think it, I don't know if it throws kids off with how that they are doing work here. I understand that we have to teach the standards. That's not a question. My question is the grading system that we are utilizing for... grading system that we are utilizing for these kids, is it accurately preparing them for post-secondary education and how they will be graded going forward?
Well, I guess we shouldn't be surprised. I'll chime in on that. I had looked this over already, actually, and had... trying to get my thoughts all together on this, because I've been thinking on this a while. And so, I was going to start by acknowledging, with regards to the SRG and stuff, there was a lot of work put into it from our educators, from our administrators, which is greatly appreciated. And schools made progress, right? We aligned up our curriculum. We aligned up our instruction, assessments, all to meet the Iowa academic standards. As you noted, Monica, it's required, right? We have to teach those. Very strong teaching practices, particularly our rubrics. Rubrics are very strong and a great tool for the kiddos to know, for the teachers to use, also all the different kind of instruction practices and stuff. And this, those things, the clear rubrics, the assessments, the differentiated instruction practices, stuff like that, should absolutely stay. That stuff is the hard work, right? We're talking about the grading scale itself. And I agree. I think it's time we need to revisit this. I talked with someone, and they had a great analogy. And, you know, when we're trying to support our kiddos, you have kind of a... they use the stool and the three legs of the stool. We have our admin, you're doing a phenomenal job. You have our educators, you're killing it. Families, and I've been approached and discussing particularly a lot since first grades came out in December, kind of feel like they're on the wayside. Our leg's a little wobbly, right? We don't understand a lot of what exactly our kiddos are learning when we look at their grades, because we don't see grades. We see numbers. Some people got a lot of shock when grades came out, because the numbers didn't really give an accurate picture of where their kiddos were. And we want to make that leg strong, right? Because you have families that want to be present and want to be part of the educational process for the kiddos. While the teaching, the standard-based teaching itself should remain, right? We legally have to do that, and they're doing a phenomenal job with it. I propose we kind of shift away from the standard-based grading and return to the traditional A to F letter grading scale. I don't want to leave any of the progress that's made, because we've made a lot. Just want to improve on our communication and rebuild the partnership within our community and our families in the school. Traditional grading would allow more accessible and immediate feedback for kiddos and parents, as well as for guardians and parents to be more familiar with the grading system, so they can interpret report cards, monitor progress, and be there for their kiddos. While standard-based grading aims to provide more detailed, right, specific objectives, it can create confusion, and it has created confusion for our family and kids. Traditional grades offer more of a bigger-picture, understandable view. I believe it's a single... we also have, if you fail one standard, you fail the whole class, or you fail that, you know, you're ineligible and stuff like that. And that is not right. That is not fair. That needs to be relooked at. Students deserve opportunities to recover, to learn, to improve, and traditional grading, I think, allows more flexibility in that and more of a forgiving system, because they can fall in a different grading scale on that, right? You can pass with a D. You can fail a test and do great on the next one and still grow off that standard and be able to accomplish a strong passing of the class. Our students have a huge support system, like I said, within the school from our educators. We need to ensure that the families can play a stronger role in this, and we can do this by having us discontinue standard-based grading and going back to the letter grade system. So with that, I would move to approve... well, let me check. Does anyone else have discussion before I make a motion?
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
All right, so are you proposing that we keep the rubrics the same, but you just want to change it back to like percentages and letter grade? Everything else stays, like what they've done and have to teach stays the same?
Absolutely, because those can easily be transitioned into the ABCDs, whatever. You keep it as-is, and we're already not really even doing standard reference grading anymore, because we do classwork that's graded, and that's not part of the typical SRG. So, we're already kind of stepping out of it anyway, so why not just kind of keep the really great stuff from it, that teaching practices, those rubrics, you know, the assessment, stuff like that, but bring the community, bring the families back in to understanding where their kiddos are, and the kiddos understand that, too. So, it's strictly the grading scale, and I'm speaking strictly to secondary, not to our elementary. Elementary, like I said, they've done a lot of work, as both have, but elementary's kind of had, always had a differentiated kind of grading scale. I'm not looking at that. I'm talking about secondary, growing off what elementary's doing and making that next step, and kind of like Monica said, playing into when they go into colleges and stuff. Because some of the kiddos that I talked to from I-35 that graduated last year struggled a bit with that transition, and they said, you know, the SRG, they didn't feel it helped them in any way to be more prepared for college like they should have been, so...
I think one thing, when I hear that parents don't understand how to gauge where their kids are at, my mind goes back to, is that a technology issue with infinite campus? So, I don't know if infinite campus can transpose, you know, from what it has now for the scale. Does it need more details? Does it need to be built out more? But I feel like there's... there needs to be some research on that side of it, if that's a big issue that parents don't understand. And I would be curious, you know, to see, can the system revert back to what it was before, but keep what's been built out so far? So, I'm not opposed to it, but I also want to understand, what does it take to do that? You know, the timing, who's going to do that? Is there enough time for the administration, the teachers, to go through and build something out differently, or look at what that change would possibly look at? And then, what is the training, and how do you teach parents how to be able to access the system? Because I just keep hearing that infinite campus, you know, they just don't know. And so, is that an issue with the system? That's where my mind's going.
And I think that's part of it, right? A lot of it's just the numbers itself. Like, I would look, and I'd see the numbers. For college classes, I see the grades. The numbers were not, and then when I got the final report card, I was kind of shell-shocked, like, what happened there? Speaking on infinite campus, because I looked into that as well, we use it at the school in which I teach at, and it... we have not had a parent complain, and we use traditional grading style with that. They can see where their kids are at. They can see the grades. We have an employee at our school who sold job as a deal with infinite campus, and, you know, she said it can be transferred over. You just kind of switch the thing, and then the teachers pick, you know, do you do a weighted scale? Do you do a regular scale? And then you just put your work in there and hit the grade, and it's a lot more user-friendly, in my opinion, because, like I said, I use it all the time as a teacher, and it's hard to... I won't even open it as a parent, because it's just, with what's on there right now, it's too confusing. It's too much.
All right, I have some follow-up questions. So, right now, correct me if I'm wrong, and this might be a Chad question even, too, but right now, the eligibility is based off of, if you fail a standard, you're ineligible. And all I need is a nod. Is that correct? No? Okay. But if we change this, would we not have to revert back to like the GPA, the 1.5, or would we... and if we did change it, next question would be, what about someone that's ineligible right now from the end of the year going into this new year? How do we then work that? Nothing should. Okay. I just want to ask the questions, because it's what popped up in my head. Thank you. Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the student handbooks as presented for the upcoming school year. However, with respect to secondary building handbook only, I request that the administration revise the current grading policy to reflect a traditional A to F letter grading scale for grade seven through 12, replacing the current standard-based grading model. This update should be completed and reflected in the secondary handbook prior to the start of the 25-26 school year, ensuring clarity and consistency for families, students, and more importantly, staff.
Okay, so it's been motioned to approve the handbooks as presented, directing the administration to revise the grading practices to reflect standard, traditional A through F letter grading before the start of the school year. Do I have a second?
Correct.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the soccer sharing agreement with Winterset. Approve the agreement for girls' soccer with Winterset Community School District. Is there a discussion?
It's just for girls' soccer, correct? Am I reading that right? Just girls' soccer?
Just girls' soccer? Okay.
I believe that's all that we've got participating in it.
Oh, it's just girls? Yeah. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the girls' soccer with Winterset.
It's been properly motioned to approve girls' soccer sharing agreement with Winterset. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have bus number 12 repairs. We have a recommendation from the administration to approve a $13,148 for bus 12 repairs by Hogland Bus Company. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the $13,148.06 repair with Hogland Bus Company.
It's been properly motioned to approve the recommendation for the bus repairs presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Next, we have disposal pest control bids. The recommendation is accept a disposal bid from TRM and pest control bid from Orkin for the 25-26 school year. Apologize. Looks like it's waste management for $1,104, and then TRM disposal for $1,272. Am I reading that right? Apologize. Is there a discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to accept the disposal bid from TRM and pest control from Orkin for the 25-26 school year.
It's been properly motioned. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the EarthWalk carts. I had to ask what this is. This is a carts that you put the laptops in and charging, and they can move around. So, the recommendation is to go with Howard Technology Solutions for $7,434 to purchase an EarthWalk cart. Is there a discussion?
So, is this replacing carts we have, or it's just new ones for the laptops? Okay, for each of the classrooms, then? Correct. Okay.
Okay, is there a discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the EarthWalk carts.
I'll make the motion to approve the bid on the EarthWalk carts.
It's been properly motioned to approve the purchase of the EarthWalk carts. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the school fees for the 20-25, 20-26 school year. Briefly looked over this. It looks all the same, except for adult foods fees going up.
And students went up 10 cents for food, also.
I see that. All right, is there a discussion on the 20-25-26 school fees? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the presented school fees for the 25-26 school year.
It's been properly motioned to approve the school fees for 25-26 as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next, we have approval of the janitorial cleaning service for FY26. It's a recommendation to approve Royal Cleaning Solutions to provide cleaning for FY26. And the bid on that one is $18,855? Oh, I'm sorry, the Royal one, $18,500. Is there a discussion?
I know there's a little bit of a difference in price. Have we had... are they doing a good job, Royal Cleaning? Have we had any issues? I mean, we're pretty content with...
Yeah, so when I talked to Rick, he said Royal Cleaning is who he preferred, so he was very happy that they came in with a little lower bid, and he's got a good relationship with them, and they do a nice job, so...
Is there further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the janitorial cleaning services for FY26.
I will make a motion to approve Royal Cleaning Solutions for cleaning services for FY26.
It's been properly motioned to approve Royal Cleaning Solutions for cleaning service for FY26. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have volleyball poles and attachments. It was a recommendation to approve the volleyball poles and attachments with sports imports for $7,270.30. Is there a discussion?
Are we replacing, or what's the context behind needing new?
So, no nets this year, it's just the attachment stuff?
Okay, is there further discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the volleyball poles and attachments.
I will make a motion to approve volleyball poles and attachments with sports imports for $7,270.30.
It's been properly moved to approve the volleyball poles and attachments with sports imports as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have our upcoming dates. Next board meeting will be on July 28th. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It's been properly motioned to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I will second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.